Recommendations upon recruitment and retention of our best and brightest to effect change and rehabilitation in the lives of our children. Thank you, and I welcome any questions you might have.
You know, you and I have been talking about this for a while, and I need you to speak up. Nobody can hear you hardly.
I want to be heard.
I wish everybody did, because people are listening on YouTube or whatever we from on the Internet or whatever, they could hear better. If anybody talked like that, so thank you.
Yes, sir.
I just got one question. The call sharing is going to be the state and city. Have you already talked with them? Are they on board to do this, or are we the first step on the call sharing?
The call sharing, as far as I know, they're on board with it. I have not had, I mean, we've shared this with AOC. As far as I have, there's no opposition, as far as I know. And Ms. Douglas is, I think she's here.
Cheryl can speak to this.
Alabama pays half of the salary of the top kids. That's just working.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure. Okay, that's, you answered my question. Any other questions?
We heard you, Judge.
Well, I appreciate you hearing me, and I appreciate your consideration. It's long overdue. Thank you so much.
Next agenda.
Assistant Chief Deputy Wesley Richardson.
Good morning. How are you all today?
Good.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you.
Only a couple of days.
Yeah, yeah, and I, listen, I must brag for one minute. On Sunday, Wesley and I, the rest of the Sheriff Department was recognized by Pentlala Baptist Church, along with myself, for ensuring that we make Pentlala a great place, and the whole Hall area a great place to live. And they wanted to thank us and thank the County Commission for supporting the Sheriff Department and making sure that crime is down in that area. So, thank you, thank you guys for what you do.
Yeah, well, thank you. We appreciate that. Is the first one the K-9?
Yes.
Administrator call.
Item number three.
Okay, so, this is a retirement request for K-9 Roscoe. This dog's been with us for approximately seven years. He's reaching nine years of age. That is the average, based on the National Policing, is a seven to 10-year lifespan. He's got medical conditions, and we're requesting to retire him. And as customary, his current handler would like to take full responsibility of his future care in his latter years.
Let me, next agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I do have a contract that we used with the last K-9 that I'll supply to Assistant Chief Richardson.
Thank you, sir. The next item is the E-911 Rural Addressing Coordinator request. This is a position that Sheriff Cunningham, we've had at the Sheriff's Office in the past. He actually deactivated this position, I believe, back in 2019, and tried to build it in-house at a lower level. Unfortunately, we went through two where we've, we've lost those people. We train them up, get them certified at this lower pay rate, and he did it to try to save the county money, but we, we train them up, and then they move on. We're back in that position again. We currently have one. There's offers being made back on par with the E-911, so we're requesting that we deactivate the ASS position and do a promotional back-to-the-rule addressing that I believe was in place back in 2019.
Any questions? Let me, next agenda.
Thank you.
Cheryl Thomas.
I have with me my assistant, Twyla Glover. I didn't get her name wrong. She got married last year. She just never uses it. And she's the Deputy Finance Director. And the item we have is just asking to hire an account clerk at a higher step. This, Twyla supervises this position. She needs some help, and I think she said she had around 13 names. She interviewed three, and this was a good candidate. We think this candidate will bring some experience over and above what we have now and some payroll help, and so we're asking to be able to hire her at, I think it's a step nine.
It's already in the budget, yeah.
Yes, we have, I've got enough in the budget to cover. When we do next year's budget, it'll go up some, but there is enough there to cover it.
But this year's budget? So, that person will be coming on when, pretty soon?
Yes.
Okay, before the budget time?
Right, it will be before, but there's enough in the 24 budget with some vacancies to cover the cost.
Okay. Let me, next agenda. Thank y'all.
Cheryl, you can just stay up there, and Rodney can join you to discuss item number six.
Good morning. Hey, after talking with a lot of different departments, the stuff of payroll and some of the other issues that we've been having with our legacy New World system, after a lot of research, come to find out that they have a newer product that we could upgrade to, that will provide us a lot of functionality that we attempted to implement with New World back, you know, several years ago, back in 2008, 2009.
Move a little bit closer to the mic.
Is that better?
Yeah.
All right, after, what, 14 years now, the system is at a point that I'm hearing a lot of stuff from the vendor that they really want us to upgrade, and so after talking to a lot of the departments, having several meetings with all the different department heads, and going over the new functionality, what that would provide, there seems to be a lot of value in the new system that will help us tremendously here.
Excuse me, excuse me. What, currently, what, the system that we have now, and I'm really bothered when the company go in and buy another company and then discontinue a product that's been on there, and stop, stop supporting that product, and then sell you their new product. I have a real problem with that. But what are we paying now for this, this service?
Hundred and eighty thousand for the maintenance.
I'll speak to that. Back in '09, you know, when we kicked, we kicked this project off, and at the end of '08, I was the project manager, so I was here. There's a lot of people that use it now that weren't here. So, New World, we bought the New World software. Our second choice was Tyler Tech. Well, in the meantime, Tyler Tech bought New World. They are not saying you have to quit using this project, this product.
But they're going to stop supporting it?
They're not selling it. They're, they're still supporting it, they're not selling it, and this is kind of a situation of, you know, it's kind of when are you going to convert?
Yeah.
You know, the longer we go, in other words, you don't have to convert now, but it's not if, like I said, it's just basically when. Like, the city, for instance, just went on this new Tyler Munis, and it, it just includes enhancements. Now, one of the reasons is price.
I'm just interested, yeah, I'm just interested in the difference in what it's going to be costing us. This one is a million dollars just installed.
The, the New World product.
Then, 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 how much was it?
The New World, the software costs 700,000 back in '09 to compare. And then, of the course, the annual maintenance has gone up. It's 180,000 right now. In 2014, we looked at adding the time and attendance to a cost of 400,000. We didn't do it then because we were still in recovery mode after the economic, you know, crash around '10. We did not put that product in there. We always intended to put it in there, we just never did.
All right.
And, and I, I don't like the cost either, but.
Rodney, why is it jumping so much?
Did we shop?
Why is the maintenance jumping from 180 to 408?
That's just.
Time and, time and attendance is a big item. We don't have that one.
And we're adding, like, for sales tax revenue. That would be a replacement for that software, too, that Terry's been using since 2016. And as part of the functionality, that would give her an online portal where businesses can go in, register, see their account, pay their taxes online, file online.
I know, but if there, what shopping did we do? This is, this, this, like, these are outrageous prices, and these increases are just, I mean, it's just not something I can pass on today, I'm telling you. Because I don't understand enough about it. I read it. It bothered me, number one, how, how things came down, but then when I saw the price and the increase from, it's going up a couple hundred thousand, it's just too much for me to pass on today, Mr. Chairman.
Is there an escalation on the service? It was at 180, so it's been at 180 for many, many years.
It's gone, it, it started going up originally. It would increase about 5% a year, probably. We're at 180 now, and I'd have, when we started, it was probably 100. So, there's an increase every year. Now, there will be some savings because it will be cloud-hosted. We won't have to replace servers like we did. I think open, does this include open, the open finance?
Yes, yes.
And we're, we're paying separately for that right now, aren't we?
So, this will be hosted in the cloud, this new?
Yes, and.
Companies on the server?
Right.
Now, this company, Tyler, did, they did purchase New World in 2015, so they didn't come to us immediately, so that's good news.
And they're, I mean, they're still not really saying, hey, you have to upgrade right now, but.
No, but at some point, they're going, well, what's happening is that they've stopped selling it, so at some point, they get, they're going, they're not going to be able to continue to maintain.
But are they the only ones that have a product that can replace the product that we have? I mean, this is, it's almost like they're the only ones with it, so we got to pay what they're asking us. That's, that's my impression from what I've read, and I, I think we ought to shop, if we haven't shopped. I mean, if we could put out, put out an RFP or whatever, because that, this is just a huge jump, a hit to our budget.
Rodney, if, if you shopped it out and you went a different company, a different direction, how will it affect your department? Because you've been using this particular software for so many years.
Yes, and the data conversion, well, I mean, you shop it out, but it's still going to wind up being a high-priced item. And we most certainly can run those numbers, but when you compare what we're paying for other software systems today, like for the e-ring, the camera, Ingenuity, this is right on par. For, what's costing is the implementation. Where they come down and you have a dedicated project manager, because this is a 12 to 18-month project. It's no simple undertaking. You're talking about all your financials and now payroll. So, there's a lot more new functionality that's been added to it, so that's the reason for the sense of training that will have to occur. Right now, there's a lot of things that we've heard, a lot of grievances from, like, the jail, the sheriff's office, and even probate, you know, like, all the time and attendance issues I have to deal with, and this is a big piece at, I mean, if you compare.
I'm not saying that we have a system that's been in since 2008, and it's probably time to change it. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, is there's somebody else who could do it just as well, cheaper? Because this is just one price, and this price is outrageous in my mind. So, let me see some comparisons. Let me see who else is offering this product and what price. No competition in there.
Rodney, it's also the, it's not 156,000 dollars billed monthly over a period of 12 to 18 months.
Right.
If we paid it all upfront, what would the price be? Do you know that?
Well, I think that's their, their means of allowing, as part of the ongoing implementation, instead of just billing you all upfront, that they would bill you as they implemented in. We could come in way less than that. It just depends on how fast people accept the training and move forward and able to adapt to what was being implemented.
Well, if we commit to this, I wonder if they would give us a better price if we paid it all upfront?
Man, I certainly could ask that.
I mean, because in their case, they'd rather have the money upfront than they would 80,000 a month for 12 months. They'd rather have all.
Number percent.
A lot of those are built in for milestones, you know? In other words, we got this done, we're going to pay that, and the, the help they send down. And just a note on the software, when we looked at this back in '09, you know, we looked at about five different, and New World was top, Tyler was second. They just didn't have the software there. There aren't as many today. We used to get a lot of requests to come look at our product. There's not as many to look at, and, you know, for instance, the city was on, I'm not sure what they were on, one something.
Two differences.
Yeah, they have recently just gone through this and converted to this product. I think they went live about three months ago.
So, the software is not expiring, so it's not something we've got to rush on today? Can we move it to the next, let's move it to discussion, next meeting, pending that you get the information for Commissioner Harris.
Yeah, I just, you know, I was trying to find out, what, what are we paying for maintenance now? You know, because, you know.
Are we paying 180?
180.
This says 180.
We're paying 180.
It's doubling. Annual maintenance is going to double.
That's a little bit more than double there.
How much is the time and attendance?
It's going to 400,000.
The time and attendance.
It's going from 180,000 to 400,000 annually.
Around it.
And it's, and it's right at a million dollars to install it, you know? I mean, I, I'd like to know if we can do better than that.
Yeah, I agree. We need to do some compares.
Yeah.
So, you'll get us some other, other companies that do this as well, and, and how much they might charge, and also talking to this company to see what, what incentives they might be willing to give us if we, if we sign on this new project.
Rodney, yearly maintenance includes all upgrades they have.
Yes, and.
How much is the time and attendance?
It's, yeah, it's in the contract.
We know these things always cost a few. But that's just the start.
Yeah, that's a major software addition, is the time and attendance. We don't have that at all right now. That's everybody signing.
It'd be a half a million a year next year.
So, it's something that, at some point, we're going to have to do, but we don't have to do it today. So, let's just slow down a little bit, get this information, and then, Florence, we'll readdress it, just like this, again, two weeks from now, so.
Yeah, I mean, my main concern for bringing it, the urgency, is the fact that Cheryl's retiring, and I want to make sure she can help us kick this project off.
I agree that this is important. Just get us some more information.
It's important. We'll, we'll, we'll bring her back and keep her around here.
All right, good.
Get it implemented.
If I ain't get nothing out of town today, I like.
She's not leaving town.
I think I got the votes.
You got my vote.
Yeah, I was just curious. There's a lot of innovation taking place in IT across the country. I was just wondering if any of your counterparts in county government was developing their own software to address issues that we have, as opposed to waiting on someone to come to us to sell us something? That's exorbitant, exorbitant.
Government's not that smart. We got to leave this stuff up to the private sector.
I'm just curious as to whether or not there's anyone.
I don't want the government product.
Anyone in all 3,006,9 county, parish, and boroughs across this country that's developing their own software?
I can speak. When I came to the county in 1999, we were using the in-house system that we replaced in '09. It was, it's hard to describe it. This one, we've actually, you know, saved people. I know the Finance Department has not had to add as many people, but it's, it's just much better. It is built for governmental, the governmental reporting that we have to do. This product actually is, we already have the product that does the governmental reporting that we have to do, so we can look at comparisons.
I'm just wondering, with all the technology that's available out there and all the innovation, I'm just wondering if Auburn University or some of our other high-profile institutions might be engaged in some of this that could save money down the road? I don't think we're looking at that, but we ought to.
Yeah, I can't, yeah, I'm never, I know there has been some partnership, like, University of Alabama with ALEA on certain products, but as of last count, I believe they've moved away from that. You know, due to the, the type of expertise and subject matter experts it requires to build this type of software, I have a staff of 12 people. We, there's no way.
I, I don't think it's feasible to do that in-house.
Yeah, and.
Even if, if, I, I wouldn't want us to be, to manage it.
Right.
I like this idea, believe me. I'm, I'm not against it. I know we need this, especially all of the extra added operations that, that can be performed with this system.
Yeah.
They're all attractive, and, and we need them all, but, you know, it's a big jump from 180,000 to 400,000. And if they can do that in one year, what will it be next year? Half a million a year? Before, it'd be a million dollars a year for a system? You know, let's, let's do a little bit more. Give me some better numbers and, and.
But do keep in mind, 14 years ago, we spent 700,000 to implement what we have today.
Right.
So.
And it was costing us 180,000.
Considering, yeah, I mean.
It, it wasn't costing us 180,000.
See, that's good numbers. That's the kind of data that we need. So, if you could get us a one-sheet with some data, and those types of comparisons are very illuminating.
Right.
So, I think we can wrap up this conversation now. We appreciate it. Get us some data, get us that one-sheet as soon as you're able to, and we'll talk about this again at our next meeting.
Sure. Thank you, Rodney.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am.
We were starting to repeat ourselves.
Mr. Chairman.
County Engineer George speak.
Since item number seven is a resolution for resurfacing Felder Road from US 31 to Butler Mill Road.
MPO money.
I mean, excuse me, excuse me, from Wasden to 80. Yes, sir.
Tax.
MPO, MPO funds, and this will get the project initiated. ALDOT requires it.
You okay with that, Carmen?
I am good with that.
Any questions about that? That'll be next agenda.
And item number eight, it's a standard ALDOT agreement for resurfacing Old McGee Road from 31 to Butler Mill, and it's 80/20 funding, 80, it's 80% federal funds, 20% county funds, and we've got the county funds.
You're already budgeted?
Yes, sir, already budgeted.
I wish we were responsible for resurfacing New McGee Road. But that's just, we can't do that. The city's on that.
That'll be next agenda.
Item number nine, the open bids on our county, countywide resurfacing project for 2024, and AIPAC was a low bidder at $6,189,990, which we thought was a really good price, and we recommend it be put on next agenda.
They got aggressive, they got tired of Wiregrass doing them all.
Yeah, I know, they, I think they, Wiregrass was, it was only 30, 32,000, but 22 bids, and I think they were, they were really.
I'm glad you had three companies bid, and three from Montgomery, too, so.
Yes, sir. And with the asphalt averaged out about $75 a ton, which is actually, last year it was $76 a ton on average, you know? So, it was a tremendously good price.
All right, that'll be next agenda.
Okay, that's all we got.
Thank you. Grants Manager Regina Walker.
Good morning.
Good morning, Regina.
I'm here asking you to consider the policies and procedures for the housing rehab grant we were awarded in conjunction with our partners at Carp Deck for the unincorporated areas of Montgomery. I see you smiling.
Any questions on that?
Ms. Walker?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. You gave me an opportunity to, to ask a question yesterday. I apologize, I didn't have a chance to get back with you.
Yes, sir.
On page four of this.
Let me get to page four with you, hold on. Yes, sir?
It says, under head of household, female-headed, not eligible if single-person household, in parentheses there. Does that mean that if there is an older lady who happened to be widowed, that needs a roof because a roof is leaking, she may not be qualified based upon the criteria here?
That, I'm not sure, but my colleague Leslie is in the audience, I don't want to put her on the spot, but she's been doing CDBG for a lot longer than I have. Leslie, do you know the answer to that?
Yes, I, yes, my, the federal government does not consider a blind person female-headed household.
Okay. So, the answer is a elderly widder with a leaking roof could not qualify?
Not qualified, I mean, yes, they qualify. This means they are not considered a female-headed household. There has, has to be more than one person in the household to be female-headed. Makes sense, I understand, but unfortunately, it's the way the government looks at that.
Okay, I'll, I'll ask for more clarification later. Thank you.
That's why you don't want government making software.
I thought I said Auburn University.
Touche.
That'll be next agenda.
Thank you.
Next, we'll hear from Ken Ward on several items, starting with, I believe, number 11.
So, number 11 is an application to Keep America Beautiful for the, their annual MLK Community Improvement Grant, which allows communities to apply for different projects along, in the areas in and around MLK corridors. In Montgomery, that is I-85, that goes from the Eastern Boulevard into the intersection with I-65, which goes across three different commission districts. And so, this will offset the cost of some of the community litter cleanups for three of our county commission districts, and then we have money in the public affairs budget for the other ones. It'll also allow us to do some additional things in addition to some public art and things like that, and so, there's no match for this one, and we've been working with Ms. Regina Walker as well, the grants manager, on that one. Any questions?
That'll be next agenda.
And then, the next one is an application to the National Park Service for their Rivers, Trails, and Conservation Assistance Program. This is not a financial grant, but a professional services program where they come and bring their National Park Service expertise. They have expertise with a lot of different areas in consultation with our county administration and, and our grants team. We're looking at using this as a way to develop a very preliminary plan to connect the River Walk from downtown to Montgomery Whitewater, as an effort to make it a better pedestrian gateway. This is another grant with no financial match for the, for the county.
Isn't the city already in, in the process of trying to put, connect the Whitewater area to the riverfront?
They have some, we talked with the city, they have some very preliminary plans to do some temporary structures along the Interstate Bridge overpass. This would allow us to start the study and start to develop the plans for developing an actual River Walk, where it actually goes along the actual river. The city's plan goes along the, the road.
But it, it sounds like something that, that should be coordinated with the city, though.
Oh, yeah, and then we're planning to coordinate with the city and other different partners in the area for that.
Yeah.
Ken, hold on, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We are talking about the 2024 ARPRO Community Challenge Grant.
Oh, no, sir. This is through the, this is the number 12, the National Park Service Grant Program.
So, that would be next agenda on that one.
And then, number 13 is the AARP Community Challenge Grant. This is a private grant through AARP to fund various different projects throughout the county, another thing that we've worked with, the grants team and the county administration on. A lot of them is connecting with Whitewater, some of the other ones with some, some projects out in the unincorporated areas of the county as well, along with some projects in conjunction, possibly with the, the city-county library system.
Who made the decision to allocate, or at least to request allocations for each one of these items, 1, 2, 6?
These were made in conjunction with a kind of a collaborative effort with county administration and then grants team, but we can definitely adjust that, given if there's any suggested opportunities. That's in no way a hard opportunity. They allow us to fi, apply as many opportunities as possible.
I just noticed, because all of this is interesting, but I just noticed that Flatwood, because I thought I saw Flatwood, did I see Flatwood here?
Yeah, it's not.
We have Flatwood.
Item number two.
For a digital connectivity program. But we can add any others. They allow us to apply for as many as possible. So, if you have any other ideas for the Flatwood area, please feel free, and we can add that to the list if you'd like.
Thank you.
You know, if we, if we are awarded any of these grants, I'd like that the commission receive regular reports on how these funds are being spent.
Yeah, we definitely will.
What projects are being, what projects are being considered? I just, I don't mind going after the money. I want us to have a plan, though, in terms of how we're going to spend it.
Yeah, we definitely will provide regular updates to the commission in regards to any of this.
Who's going to be administering these grants?
These will be administered with myself, and then Ms. Regina Walker will be kind of doing it as a joint administration. These will be administered with myself and then Ms. Regina Walker will be kind of doing it as a joint administration.
Not going to get any extra people to do that now?
Yeah, we have enough time to be able to do that.
I hope so, because, I mean, you can ask for the grants, but ask for the grants now and then come and say, well, we're busy. We need some more people. Tough.
But, yeah, we have enough time to do it, and most of these are pretty small ones.
Because we don't... This is something new. It's something I've been pushing for us to do, really, to seek grants and try to do more for quality of living type of issues in the community. So I really, really support it, you know, but I just want to make sure that these grants are administered properly, you know, and that we have, you know, enough time and stuff to do it right. I wouldn't want to get into trouble fooling with some...
No, we completely agree.
$10,000 grant.
Yeah, we completely agree with you on that.
Just to clarify, you've been, Commissioner Harris, you've been wanting us to seek grants that don't have any match.
Yes.
You're right. And he did that.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's why this is a great proposal.
No, I support it.
Thank you for your work on this.
A great start.
And then I'm looking down the long... What's in the future for this?
And then we also have some other items that we wanted to discuss. So NACO, the National Association for Counties, has their applications out for their annual awards program. From my understanding, we've never really applied for any of these, but we're wanting to submit some applications this round. We have some suggested opportunities, but if we... That we wanted to run by y'all, but if y'all have any other suggestions, please let us know. We were talking about some ideas possibly with the broadband study, Elton Dean Park, some of the veterans programs we've done with the Purple Heart Parking Spaces, and possibly the Critical Home Repair Program if it qualifies, since it's still an ongoing process.
I got some other ones there.
Yeah.
Closer to the community.
The only requirement is it has to be within five... Has... Had been started within five years from this year. So it can be any project that was started in 2019, I believe.
How many projects can we pick?
We can pick as many as we want.
Oh, so each commissioner can get a project, right?
Yeah, if y'all have any sort of... It just has... There's some basic guidelines, but any commissioner can... We can submit as many as we want.
Okay.
And then also, just to update y'all on the little free libraries that were funded a few months back, all those have been installed at every county park now. So we'll be reaching out over the next week to, as an additional... There's an additional one that y'all get to pick to put in a public place in each of your districts. So we'll be reaching out for y'all to decide on those locations. But all the county parks now have one, and all the probate annex facilities have one. Where the location, we were going to put one here downtown, the Courthouse Complex, had some issues with the roots, so we're going to be moving that one. But all those have been installed. The City-County Library System was very generous to donate a lot of their unused books. So they've all been filled and are getting good use. And then also, we wanted to run by y'all another potential project. One of the judges had brought it up to us last year, but it was too late in the school year to do it. But we also saw that NACO had done something similar, but a student art contest connecting, allowing students to do, submit art pieces on their favorite area in the county. And then we were talking about possibly displaying them for some time at the Justice Center up the street and doing kind of like a small little contest, allowing students to submit it and displaying the top 20 or so. But wanted to get any feedback if y'all had any issues with that.
Ken, the Montgomery Arts Center, which is a local nonprofit, they have done that type of thing. Probably some of our other local groups and organizations have done that, but I know that they have this year. So that might be a good partner in an activity like this, the Montgomery Arts Center.
Perfect. I'm writing them down, because we think this is a good way to connect the students and then also just to beautify some of our underutilized spaces in some of our county buildings. Any other questions?
Well, Ken, I just want to thank you for keeping the county commission in the eyes of the public and for the great work that you're doing, particularly for that most recent initiative regarding parking spaces for the combat wounded veterans. I really appreciate that and all the work you've done with Operation Green Light and the extensions surrounding that. So thank you so much.
Well, we're glad to be able to install those for the veterans. Montgomery has a big veteran community here, and this is just a small way for the county to be able to give back to those who have done so much for our country.
Thanks, Ken. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Emily Flowers and her people from Alabama Dance Theater.
You didn't bring any dancers?
We couldn't. We're not as cute as our dancers. They are such good students this year.
We tried, but they had to go to school.
Oh, really?
Thank you.
Thank you. It is beautiful day.
Hey, I'm Emily Flowers, the Managing Director of the Alabama Dance Theater with the artistic director Kate Seals Smith and Assistant Director Sarah Sanford. And I can't take credit for any of the beautiful work the dancers do or their training, but I'm incredibly proud to be associated with this group. We're in our 37th season. We were founded in 1986 by Kate's mother, Ms. Kitty. And we have a short film if we want to... If we can show that, please? Sarah does our website.
I train dancers. I don't do any of that.
Emily, while that's spinning, you want to share with us?
Yes, sir. Okay, sorry. We're waiting on tech, but we are proud to let you guys know what we've been up to and some of the accomplishments we've handled this last year. Most notably, we are thrilled that we're able to get Montgomery County Public School students back to our live shows. COVID had pretty much wiped that tradition out. We used to bring thousands of elementary school students primarily to our performances at the Davis Theater, have talkbacks with them, give them educational materials, work with their teachers, and just bring kids to see a live show at a full-scale performance. In addition to training our dancers, that was a big part of our outreach, and it really almost deteriorated during COVID, of course. We made a virtual video. We shared that, and then we would kind of piecemeal school by school back into the audience, but we weren't getting those thousands of kids. Okay, sorry. I hear music.
Another we've supported y'all in the past. Is there a different ask or just continue the support?
Well, yes, sir. Continue, please. But this year is a very special year. We are going to a festival held every seven years. Well, the regional festival is every year. And our dancers fundraise all year to go to that. It's three days of incredible classes and networking. This year's a national festival for regional dance America. We'll be going to Daytona Beach, Florida. We're lucky enough to be in driving distance, but that still means the expense of a bus. And if you look through the booklet there, you'll see a breakdown of the expenses. They do a great job of covering their own costs. They fundraise. Their parents work hard. It's going to be at least $1,500 a kid this year because of the additional day, the hotel. We're competing for the hotel space with Jeep Week in Daytona Beach, so the prices are a little higher. It should be an eye-opener for some of the kids. But they work so hard all year with festival in mind, because they want to look their best to represent Montgomery and Alabama. They see how they are compared to their peers from Mobile Ballet, Atlanta Ballet, Appalachian Ballet, and now this year, the rest of the country. So this is a big event in their lives. It's only seven years, so some kids never even time out to go to a national festival. There are increased costs, so we're just asking for some additional support from each of you for making this year's special festival year happen in addition to this year.
How many kids are you taking in?
The whole company's not going. Some of the little biddies are going to stay, but it's about 30 of our high school and junior high school dancers, and they will have incredible opportunities to meet recruiters for college scholarships, professional placement, and things like that. So it's a huge networking event and a great exposure for them to the big world out there.
What's been our joint level of support over to over? Any idea recently?
I think we've been doing 10. I can't remember.
No, we're not in the budget, but we've been very grateful that...
I know, but we've been supporting them out of...
The group has put 15 together, and two years ago, you did an extra five, and then last year, you did an additional five, and that totaled up to 20 in the last two years.
Twenty.
Each year.
Okay.
And if you could spare another $5 to $10 each, that would... $500. It would... Every bit is going to help us get to this festival. If you look at the total project budget, it's about a $60,000 trip.
Yeah, so 44 going, basically, 44 or 45.
That includes some chaperones. And again, they pay for themselves, but we do take seven ADT staff members because we want all of our artistic presence there. We have... We also volunteer and help administer the festival. We are board members on the festival director's level. It's a very important part of our year.
But your kids are raising money themselves and helping to buy...
I will be hitting each of you up with a plant sale real soon. They're beautiful.
Constantly.
Well, thank y'all so much.
We thank you.
Thank you very much.
Ms... We only have one more speaker, and then we're going to take a break. Can you stick around for a minute?
Yeah, let's talk about...
Ms. Harris with the Nat King Cole Society.
Got a fellow commissioner here today.
A gentleman from Bullock County.
Bullock County.
I still call him mayor.
Mayor.
Hey, good to see you. Good morning.
Good morning, Felicia.
Put the light down so she can... Thank you.
Okay, we are the Nat King Cole Society, a portion of the Nat King Cole Society. At this time, I would like for Felicia to come forward and just tell us what we got going, and I will come back and John will come. Thank you.
First of all, good morning, everyone. We put a packet before you. This is the finale for Nat King Cole. 30 years in this city of assisting students through visual and performing arts, whether it was to help them get books, help them to go to interviews, help them to get to New York, whatever the case may be. The Nat King Cole Society has done that for 30 years. Mr. Amos Harris started this organization. He passed away in 2011. Mrs. Harris, who is soon to be 93 years old, took the challenge, and she has run it with grace. And we are so thankful that even during the pandemic, we did not miss a beat. But we come before you not necessarily for our 30th annual scholarship birthday bash, but we have one thing on the agenda that was not met, and that is the statue of Nat King Cole. It was actually on the original list for Mr. Amos Harris. So if you go past the sponsorship information, it speaks about the statue. We have a local artist who also did the statue of Rosa Parks, right there on the corner of Commerce, as well as the Amelia Boynton Robinson statue. We've been meeting with her, and we've also been meeting with the Botanical Society of Oak Park. And we are hoping to have that statue put over there in that area. I think it would be a great tourism place for the statue to be erected, but also to solidify what the Nat King Cole Society has done to keep Nat King Cole, who was a native Montgomeryan, to keep his legacy, Mr. Harris's legacy alive. You can see the numbers on there, what it would take for the statue. We're going to unveil... Well, we're going to mention that at our finale event on March 17 at the RSA Activity Center. If those of you that knew Mr. Harris, we had countless gatherings at the RSA Activity Center. The last time we came before the county was in 2019, when it was the 100th birthday of Nat King Cole and the 25th for the society. Yes, sir.
So I'm just, for the cost of time, I hate to interrupt you, but is the ask of the commission to help with the $30,000 that you're trying to raise?
That is correct.
You're asking other groups and...
Yes. We take care of the birthday bash scholarship part through our letter-writing campaign, also through our private supporters of the Nat King Cole Society. But yes, this statue is very important, and we want Mrs. Harris to be around when we unveil it.
And I remember in 2019, the celebration and the mural. I love the mural.
Yes, sir. That was one of the projects as well.
Any questions from fellow commissioners?
Ms. Chairman, just a comment, please. I just want to thank Ms. Harris for all the work that she's done along with the society for sharing your husband, Amos Harris, with us. He was just an outstanding individual, not only the educational component, which is very, very good, but just the music, bringing Nat King Cole back, Nat King Cole back in terms of his music and the connection that he has here with the city of Montgomery. So I'm forever grateful for the work that he did and for the work that you all continue to do. And you certainly have my support, so I just want to thank you so much for that, and you're still looking like a rose.
I would like to thank the commission for your many, many years that you have supported this organization. Many of you were not around at the time, but even from the onset of my husband starting the Nat King Cole Society, the county commission have always been very supportive. We couldn't have done it without you. We just appreciate you, and we look forward for your continued support of this organization, because we feel that it's very beneficial to the young people that we are serving. And my husband was very adamant about this organization and about the support that he's gotten from this commission. And we just want to keep Nat King Cole's legacy alive, because that was my husband's desire. So we just want to thank you so very, very much.
John. John, I've got to cut us short a little bit.
I know you got to cut us short. One moment before you go, I want to tell you, Ms. Harris, you have my support. And I have traveled with Mr. Harris growing up around the world. My father was a big supporter of Mr. Harris, Mr. Doug Moore. So I want to thank you. You do have my support. I've known Mr. Harris since I was a young lady, very young. And so I know his passion for it. So you have my support on that also.
Thank you so much.
I made a concession, ma'am. I think that... I made a concession, ma'am, I think that obviously we're going to help you. We don't know how much we can help you, but you have other options too. But we'll have to maybe discuss this a little bit further. And the other thing too, until we get our funding back in the budget again, we can't really do anything today, but hopefully that will be coming fairly soon, but we'll definitely talk about it. John, you want to share something?
I just want to say it's great to be among you fellow colleagues, commissioners, and I know you individually, and I will be talking to you individually, I understand you're short for time right now, but I have some personal, individual conversations I'd like to share with each of you.
Let's do it. Thank y'all so much. Lawrence, we still got two or three left on the.
That's correct. Tax and Audit has a proposed twenty twenty-four External Audit Services Agreement with Avenue Insights and Analytics.
Yeah, we already have that in the budget funds for that already, so that'd be next agenda.
There is a Budget Isolation Resolution supported by the Association of County Commissions of Alabama.
Any questions on that one? I think we've already read that one, we've already been briefed on that, anybody have any questions on that? So that would be next agenda.
There is a Board Member Appointment to the Pike Road Volunteer Fire Protection Authority. There's a letter from the chairman requesting the reappointment of Mr. Shelton.
Yeah, we have an excellent board, operating board now for the Volunteer Fire Department of Pike Road, and it's my request that we reappoint Brian Shelton to another term there. So that would be next agenda.
Thank you.
We've got ten o'clock, we're going to take about a four-minute break, so ten oh five, we'll be right back to start promptly at ten oh five.
And Ms. Chairman, of course, before, before we go, the people from Madison Park want to be heard on the,
No doubt.
The number four agenda item.
Ten oh five.
Thank you.
Yeah, so right after the prayer.